This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, folks, it's 6 o'clock. Um, this, um, it is Thursday, October the 26th, 2023. And, um, we do have a quorum. It looks as though Mrs. King is not here. But, um, we'll go ahead and get started. Um, start with Pastor Van Zant. So glad you're here, sir.
Join me in now to do a prayer. Dear the Father, I thank for this day and I thank for the weather that we've had. I think for the sunshine that we've had today. I pray that you'll please just allow us to have a great meeting tonight. I pray that you'll please us be with our elected officials and I pray that you'll please us be with our mayor and our city administrator. And I pray that you'll please us allow them to make the best decisions for this city as we continue to move forward. And I pray that you'll please us to allow us as citizens to just be law-abiding citizens, Father. Lord, I pray that you'll please us be with our police chief and our fire chief. And I pray that you'll please us be with those that are underneath their watch care. I pray that you'll please us allow them to safeguard our city and I pray that you'll bring them home safely tonight. Certainly thank for the government that we have, Lord. I pray that you'll please us allow your peace to rest upon this city. We ask to sing in Jesus' name, amen.
Allegiance through the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Okay, um, Mr. Atkins and I were just talking about these public comments. Um, council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may or may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, and/or may propose that the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the city secretary at citiesecretary@cityofrome.com prior to 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting and must identify each subject you plan to present to be recognized. If the writer of a public comment is unable to read her own comment, it should be given to a friend, family member, or associate that is able to attend in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting. And the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult, abuse, malign, or slander any individual shall be cause for termination of time privileges and removal from council chambers. Okay, what you got?
Lisa Wilson is our first speaker on open records, ARPA funds, the rollback petition, and the Biwell vandalism.
I am reading this Lisa Wilson address to party West First here in Rome. Email is here. I'd like to address the mayor and the council. And I have four topics: open records, ARPA funds, rollback petition, Biwell vandalism. At the last meeting, it was mentioned in the proof that $30,000 of the ARPA funds could be used to open the senior building that has been closed for approximately two and a half years. We community members have been having a monthly community luncheon at Rome Library. We are quite happy with this arrangement. As long as the library will let us continue to do this, we see no need to change. But it appears is that no consideration was given to the fact that spending ARPA funds for this is a continuing cost maintenance. Appliances, pay someone to work there cleaning it, there's a lot to consider. Please consider for the time being using these funds to go toward water, sewer, and road repairs. Remodeling of the old city hall could risk paying rent. Any available dollars should immediately be used and marked on water, road, and sewer. The same strategy should be considered for all expenditures for all departments. Open records, inasmuch that our city has promoted transparency and made some advances, I question why all of a sudden the change to administratively incest on schedule of fees in a separate ordinance. Is there an underlying purpose to reduce the amount of open records? Please keep on keeping Rome transparent. Federal and state law mandate open records requests. Messing with this is changing the process and I believe would be a mistake. The rollback petition, it's 97 citizens sign that was presented the last council meeting. Citizens are speaking out with their signatures, please listen. Lastly, recent crimes in Valbella State and vandalism or hate crimes, in my opinion, is unimaginable to me in this day and age. However, it must be known that it does not represent all of the citizens' opinion or beliefs. Hopefully, this will not happen again. And also, Veterans Car Show is coming up November 11th. Look at the Veterans Facebook page for individual things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Josh McCabe on item number 12.
Good evening, council. My name is Josh McCabe, Crown Point. First of all, this is not intended as an attack on the council, rather my thoughts and opinions on the matter and in no way represent any other group. Although I've taken a step back, I've still been listening and watching the discussions I have, most notably about the budget and tax rates. So this year, y'all decided to keep the rate same as last year, which is great. I don't like paying taxes either, but at least when it comes to local city taxes, I have a better understanding where they actually go on, like federal taxes. So if it's the same as last year, then why a petition this year and not last year? As someone who's been in your seats, those lay out a few of your options. Option one, you listen to 3% of the voting population, not 97%. You roll it back so it doesn't go to a vote, and now you'll be known as the council who flip-flops their decisions based on small opposition. Plus, you lose out on that projected $200,000 earmarked for water and roads and et cetera. Option two, you stick with your decision. Let the voters vote in May whether they want to approve it or not. But in the meantime, the rate still goes into effect and the city will still collect. If it's voted in, we carry on as usual. But if it's voted down, you now have to pay all that money back that you've already collected and you're out that projected $200,000. Option three, you hold a special election before it takes effect. But then again, you're out a guaranteed $5,000 to $10,000 for voting services with no prediction on which way the vote's going to go. The history shows we know which way it's going to go. Any decision you make on this will be a losing decision unless it gets voted in. In the end, if it gets voted down, your only other option is upon, and we all know how that works. So then how do you pay for the necessities of all citizens? Water, waste, roads, et cetera. If you don't find a way to pay for water now, we won't have any later on, and that becomes a larger problem. If you think perhaps I'm just making all this aforementioned up, I urge you to seek counsel from your knowledgeable city staff. So let's go back to my original question. Why a petition this year and not last? Only difference I can see is that a certain seat is up for election. It'll look good on your resume, sure, that you save each citizen a few bucks. But in the long run, you're hurting the city as a whole and putting it in dangerous jeopardy of not being able to provide necessary services to all of our citizens. So my opinion, excuse me, it's my opinion as well as others that have voiced their concerns to me, is the petition is simply a political tool for future possible gain, not about the well-being of our community and preserving the future of Rome. With that, I wish you the best in your decisions and discussions on this matter. Good luck and God be with you.
Just some clarity on that. Um, Mrs. DeGan, did you, did you not tell us that when you, when the budget was prepared, you prepared it based on the voter rollback rate?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, announcements. City council meeting, November 9th, 2023, at 6 o'clock. City offices will be closed November 10th in observance of Veterans Day. City offices will be closed November 23rd and 24th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Do we have any other announcements from council?
Chief Debus has an announcement, Mayor.
Okay.
Just wanted to let everybody know that this Saturday is our DEA drug.
All right, consent agenda. Um, I'd like for number three, if council has no objection, take number three off and put that on the regular agenda so we can get just a brief summary and the where and the why on it, what and why. Um, council has no objection? Okay, then we'll, minutes from council meeting held on September 28th for approval. Minutes from council meeting held October 12th, 2023 for approval. Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve number one and two on the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance repealing existing juvenile curfew violation. Um, if we can kind of just get a brief summary of that and just what we are changing, are we removing it or what are we doing with that?
Mayor, what, what happened is the legislature removed the city's ability to impose curfews this last session and so. Well, okay.
So no more, no more curfews for juveniles or minors?
They just restricted it. And what I did is I went and looked at the existing rules that we had in place, and they didn't comply with the existing legislation. So we just rewrote the ordinance and took it out, basically said we can't impose this kind of curfew. So yes.
I'm not sure that, that our legislature is always on the same page as the, you know. Well, all right. Okay, so, um, apparently we've got a new ordinance then or, or just we're just going to repeal it and not have anything?
Well, I, I will just say, and this is just for y'all's consumption. I mean, we have a choice of doing nothing. But if a violation occurs and our police officers issue a citation, I mean, we can't enforce that. And so we just proactively in my office, we thought, well, let's take it off books. And the ordinance that I've given to you does that and it cleans it up and it just avoids that individuality.
All right, uh, motion.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance repealing existing juvenile curfew violations.
Second?
Say it.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay, regular agenda, number four, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds review.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm bringing this back again for another conversation with council about a few items as we still have some additional funds that need to be allocated. And, uh, as it relates to the ARPA funding that we were given a couple of years ago from the federal government as a result of COVID. The items that have already been approved are shown on your agenda commentary in black. The items that staff have put forward as potential funding items are shown in burgundy. There is, council does not have to make a final decision on this tonight. However, um, we would like to try and get this wrapped up so that we can move on and tend to other city business.
Well, and it seems that there are people that don't want $30,000 put into the senior center either.
Well, there was one person that we heard from. I don't know about the rest of the seniors in the city, but I know it was conveyed to me many times when I first came in that that was something that the seniors in this community very much enjoyed getting together every Friday for lunch there. And I don't know how to answer that. That was the first time I heard that they did not want it reopened.
I just, I just would hate to put in that much money and no one use it.
Uh, one thing I know, there was a comment about the library being used. And I can tell you right now, as a member of the library board, that the library is at capacity and in dire need of a new facility. So, uh, just to point that out, I don't, I think the senior center would be a much better alternative than the library if it is repaired.
If there are residual funds on this, and I know that I have suggested it before because the, and also the last few council meetings, there's, you know, repeatedly, there's been, uh, you know, we've got to do something about the west side. We've got to do something about the west side sewage. And is there no way that any of that, whatever funds are remaining, that couldn't be used to fix something on the plant?
Isn't that going to be millions of dollars?
Yeah, but is there nothing, is there not, that, does every piece of equipment out there cost a million dollars? Is there something that we could use this money towards?
It's an actual whole plant that we need. We need a.
It's a package plant, so it comes the, as a package. All of it would have to be replaced and started over again. Now, council can allocate some of these funds for some repairs, but I will say that the remaining monies that are left are not going to go very far. Mr. Dominguez can speak to that from the standpoint of what he knows needs to be repaired over there, but, um, it's just not going to stretch much as it relates to the west plant.
I'm just thinking that some of that would, you know, it might reduce what, what we have to take out in borrowed money.
I think those funds could be used where she has them listed way more useful. It's putting more Band-Aids on it when it really just needs to be replaced.
Well, like I said, it's been the topic of conversation of several council meetings. We've got to do something west side, west side, west side. And that, to me, that, that would take priority.
I, I agree with you, Mayor. The problem is the 54, the $80,000 that we have left is not going to move the needle at the west plant or on any of the clay pipe replacement or drilling a water well. We are going to have to issue bonds for those type of projects. And it will be up to council to allocate it however you choose, but it's not going to really change things at the west plant because what's needed is so large.
If it can be used, if it can be used for clay pipes, though, couldn't you take a, a segment? You don't have to redo them all at the same time. Could you not take a segment somewhere? Um, you know, a few years ago, they, they went down Old Mill and did like 60 feet of replacing the clay pipes.
I can say when you mobilize for a small component piece like that, the price is higher than when you do a mile of pipe or something to that effect. But I'll, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, replacing, uh, sections of the sewer line, uh, the engineer would have to re-engineer everything. And they don't work in little sections. It has to be, I mean, it's just the whole thing. It's he, we would have to start at one end and come all the way down. There's.
But they only did segments like in, in, on Old Mill. There's only a 60-foot segment there that's been redone. And the rest of it, the rest of it's still clay pipe as far as I know.
Yeah, and, and when they come to do the new one, that'll all have to come out again. That is, that is the problem. It's a band-aid.
I tried.
I, I just don't think that we need to continue band-aiding everything. It just ends up costing us triple, quadruple the amount that we could do it if we just fixed it correctly at the beginning.
So you will see that the items listed on here, one of the things that I would like to talk to council about is the electronic billboard sign at city hall. When we had the stage three water restrictions, we really didn't have a good way to notify people who were moving through the community. And we still had several residents who were unaware, even though we put that on Facebook and we put it on the website. It's still often, sometimes as they're just driving home, they may see that. So I'd like to explore that opportunity to put something either on the existing city hall sign. We need to speak with the owner of the building. I do believe it could be taken down and removed to another location, when and if we ever moved, if they don't want to keep that. But it would be a good investment because we could use that as another communication tool for our residents. There's another item on here that I added that we'd not discussed before as it related to upgrading our existing website to a more accessible format. I did talk with our vendor, ReVise, who, uh, the current package we have is their baseline package. And if we upgrade to this additional accessible format, if you will, we will get some interaction where we could send out notifications to residents directly from the website and we could field information from them a bit easier. It's also far more dynamic, if you will, than what we have now. So that is something that I would offer as one of the items to expend the rest of these funds on.
Did I notice on the information for, from ReVise that it also supports competitive bidding?
Yeah, I, I have not expanded on that with the gentleman, but yes, I did see that on their package, yes. You'll also see at the bottom, there is a request from the police department for motorcycle communication setup. That would only be necessary if council makes the decision for one of the items we have further down in the agenda. If we choose to go that direction, then we would need this type of capability to communicate with that officer. Any other questions on the items we've put forward?
Guessing the portable foam extinguishers seem more important hose and nozzle replacement?
It is, um, the hose and nozzle has been funded. The portable foam extinguisher would allow the chief, when he's out addressing a fire by himself, it throws a large amount of foam on it when he's a single individual who's responded. Think of a fire extinguisher multiplied many times over. And so this was one of the things that he suggested if we had additional funds left.
So the electronic billboard sign, is that going to, you said it's going to replace the Rome sign?
It should go right underneath, in between the poles, is my understanding. And we've got, it says, uh, City of Rome, and then it says the hours, and then it would go right underneath that, much like the one across the street at the pharmacy.
Like a scrolling information? Well, I like the idea of the website getting the upgrade to be more accessible. I've heard that people don't necessarily like our city website very much.
It's a little bit outdated, not, not very easy to use either. And the City of Belton was one of the ones that they sent us as, and as an example, and the City of Lufkin was one as well. And they are, they are very nice, very easy, very intuitive for the average person to use, and you don't really have to hunt and pet for things.
Yeah, I think we just got it like in 2020 or 2021.
It was with the former city administrator.
Do you remember how much that was?
Couldn't tell you, seven to 10,000, I think. I don't know. I, I mean, I'm just guessing. That's not one of those things that I've committed to memory. Is this something you guys want to vote on now or do you want to take it home and think about it and then come back with it?
I'm with all the recommended.
Because we probably need a, a cost estimate on the, um, both the billboard sign and the website.
The website cost is there, the $8,400 is the cost for that.
If we approved everything here, we still have $2,000 to play with.
Yes. And if, if we can complicate matters just a little bit more, when we purchased the OpenGov system that you see on there for $130,000, the financial system that we've been talking about, there was a projected plan to go from STW, which is an on-premise site that we have now, to OpenGov, which is in the cloud. When OpenGov actually acquired STW, they realized there were several gaps in between both of the programs and they couldn't make that transition one from the other. So we were actually refunded just over $52,000. So technically, council has an additional $54,108.01 to allocate. I did verify that with our GrantWorks administrator today because I wasn't exactly sure how they handled the refunded money.
Mr. Loftus? You have input here?
Um, relative to the electronic billboard, that would not only be used by the city hall but by senior center, fire, public works. I think that's a right there.
It'd just be a general communication tool for the city.
And the website, that's the key to a successful website, is keeping update, up to date and fresh. So if you have additional tools to make that happen, that would also be, sure.
All right, so do we have a motion then?
Are we accepting all of these? I make a motion to approve. Oh, I don't even know how to say this, everything in red?
Can we get a little more specific than that?
This, I think if you went with what the staff recommended on the agenda commentary, I can add it to the list for the ARPA funding so that we can track that.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
Say it again.
What page is that? That work that you're looking at? I would just feel more comfortable if we had specifics, what we were approving, rather than just a blanket approval.
I don't have a page number in the packet. It's in the agenda commentary for the ARPA item on the, in the packet.
Looks like it's 25 on the, on the computer. I don't know if that's the same.
It's probably in that general location.
See the website here, okay. So basically, you're going to then approve everything for facilities, technology, is that what we're saying? Technology upgrade, upgrade and or replace servers for cloud?
We've already approved those.
Everything in red. Do you have red or is it just black and white?
I just have black.
Could we amend the motion just to list the items individually?
That could, I think that that would avoid a misunderstanding later on.
I would like to amend my motion to approve desk shelves for council chambers, electronic billboard sign for city hall, upgrade of existing website to more accessible format, motorcycle communication setup, CID computer, portable foam extinguisher system.
I'll say it.
And all in favor? Okay, let's go to the next one, code updates.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that I have put on your agenda to try and make things a little bit more streamlined for us as it relates to the coming fiscal year, excuse me, the coming calendar year and the meeting schedule for council. You have at your place a draft 2024 council calendar. You all will recall that we've had some conversation about scheduling, at Mrs. King's request, a workshop to talk about items as it related to a capital improvement plan. request, a workshop to talk about items as it related to a capital improvement plan. And it has been very difficult to get everyone's schedule to align and/or to get responses from everyone on council. So I put together this council calendar that you will see at your place, it looks like this. This lists all of the important dates that we have for the year, including all of your council meeting dates, any holidays that currently exist as it relates to city hall schedule. It also has information for when your budget should be approved, when the audit should be finished, a spring break to some extent, at least for Northwest ISD, which could help people plan out a little bit better whether or not they are able to meet and on what day, and provide some transparency. This is a companion piece to the item that I have in there to update the code, which you will see, there is a draft ordinance in there that comports with what is in state law, that basically changed, changes the language that currently exists, which we are not necessarily following exactly the way it's written, that there will be two regularly scheduled meetings of the city council during each calendar month, generally the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday of the month, but we do not meet twice in November or December. So in your agenda commentary and in your draft ordinance that I have in this, or your ordinance that you have in this packet, it talks about regular meetings also still being held at least two regularly scheduled, generally the second and fourth Thursday of each month, except in December, and that the meeting dates and time shall be affixed by resolution unless the date falls on a regularly observed city holiday, which is also comporting with the state code, and that council can establish, establish regular meetings during the month as may be necessary. They would need to be noted on your council calendar, so they would need to be pre-approved. And then it still gives the mayor the right to cancel the meetings or call a special meeting if nothing has been requested to be put on the agenda, which is also consistent with the state code as it relates to our type of city. So this is kind of a two and one, if you will, for the agenda. If council's interested in changing the current code to reflect something that is a little bit more in keeping with what we're actually doing as a matter of practice as it relates to your council meetings, and then if you're interested in a draft, or excuse me, a council calendar for the next coming year, then what I would suggest is that we go ahead and establish, maybe not at this meeting, but maybe at one in November or December, a date where we could have a council orientation for new people who are elected in May, a budget retreat date so that we have that information on your regularly scheduled meeting calendar, as well as a governance retreat so that you all could get some training as it relates to being a city council and a team that functions as a city council. This is done wide, very widely in other cities, but I guess what I'd be looking for is, do you have any interest in this moving forward?
So with this calendar and you scheduling the meetings throughout the year, whether they're a retreat or whatever, we don't need to call special meetings for them because they're scheduled already?
Right. And when you call a special meeting, you have to have a super majority of four of the five of you in order for that to meet. And so this allows you to have this scheduled and predictable things throughout the year, your regular meetings. So your governance, your budget, your orientation becomes part of your regular meeting schedule because you've pre-scheduled it and you've noted it on your calendar.
I like that. I like that idea to have them scheduled like that. We don't have to worry about getting a super majority since it's so difficult to get everyone together, we kind of have an idea of when we're gonna meet.
So when does the super majority apply and when does it not? Because I think there was a meeting just a few months ago, and I had questioned because there were only three council members that were at that meeting, and it was, apparently it was okay. It was a special meeting, it wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting.
Statute says if you have a called meeting, you have to have two-thirds present for that. If I remember that discussion though, what had happened was that there wasn't any action taken at the meeting, so it really wasn't, it was kind of a no harm, no foul situation. If there isn't any action to undo, then there wouldn't even really be anything we could do about it.
So does it apply or does it not apply? That's where I get confused because we're not consistent.
Well, I think this is, this is an attempt to go toward consistent. If you go ahead and declare these are your meetings, these will be your regular meetings, and probably what I would recommend is that you do this on an annual basis. Every year you adopt your calendar, that's what most cities do, and then these would be your quote regular meetings.
And that's where you would have those, these other things that you want to throw in there.
And obviously, some cities will come back later and they'll amend these things. So if you come back later and you decide this isn't working, you can fix it, you can re-fix your schedule, and those will be the regular meetings. All the statute requires is council set its regular meetings by resolution, and I think by adopting this, that's what you're doing.
So I wasn't looking for action this evening on this, I'm just trying to find out if council has an appetite to move forward with the change in the code, as well as establishing those extra three dates on here, because the council orientation is critical for those who come on council that may not have been on the board before. It's also a very great refresher for folks. We need to do some more long-range planning, which we really don't have in Rome. We don't have a capital improvement plan, we do not have a five-year forecast, we don't have those things, those goals and objectives that we need as a staff team to work toward. Without these type of governance retreats, the budgeting retreats, the orientations, et cetera, I don't have anything to work off of that's long-range. We're basically working from meeting to meeting, which is okay, but it doesn't help us grow and prepare for the future. So I'm trying to gently move us in that direction if I can.
Now, we did have a capital improvement plan in 2019, done by Kim Lee Horn, and then there's also a comprehensive development plan.
Also in 2019.
In 2019. And those would still be the, be valid as, you know, if they're five years, those would still be valid at this point.
Yes, in theory. Capital improvement plans should be looked at every year in tandem with your budget and adjusted, whether you want to pull a project forward or push one out, whether you want to add something as unfunded and under discussion. We have several things that we don't really have our arms around that need to be done in this community and communicated out to our residents. What are the goals and objectives of council for the long-term health and welfare of the City of Rome? These are things that we've got to get better at as this city continues to grow and we evolve as a, as a city over the years, and this is what I'm recommending to you.
I think this is a great idea, because we may have had a five-year plan in the past, but actually said, every year we need to update the city government's fluid, we need to maintain everything, if not improve it. So I think it's a great idea, no objections.
So do we want a motion on this, or do you just?
I just need direction, Mayor. If council's interested, I will continue with the ordinance itself and bring it back at the next meeting under the consent agenda for approval, and I will need to get some draft dates from you all as to when you want to look at that. I'll bring you back some suggested dates for those three items to be added at the next meeting so that we can hopefully get this buttoned up before you break for Christmas in December.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we don't need any action then? And that's on both five and six. All right, number seven, agenda language update for public speakers.
Mayor, this is really something that you brought forward at the last meeting. I have put at your place some potential verbiage that could be on the agenda if you're interested in making that change. I was not able to do that independent of council, so I need some direction from you all because this was handled during the meeting the last time through a minutes motion in order to make the change. So I'm looking for direction on the statement that I gave you that takes it from nine sentences down to six, if you still want to go in that direction, or what are council's thoughts and directions for staff?
I would have eliminated the whole, the whole spiel, and as Mr. Atkins said, it's not required, but that's up to council.
Are we putting these statements on the form also? I know that y'all talked about it when I wasn't here, so.
It was suggested to be put on the form and then for some, for people to initial, so to say, I've read this initially.
Well, I think we talked about that right before this meeting, that that was something that you had suggested, but when we talked about it the last meeting, it was to bring it down to between five to six sentences and bring it back for council to review, or to just add it to the agenda. We did discuss putting it on the form, but there was no formal direction given to staff either, either way on this at this point.
I mean, I would like it to be on the form also, even, I don't know if we want to include it in, in the statement prior to the public comments or not, but I'll get input from, from y'all.
I think Ms. King's concern was more if they come to their first meeting, let's say, this is informing them kind of a rules, this is what's allowed, et cetera, and that was her main concern. And that's why we're reducing it, but also still reading it, so that way they do, are informed. And I think we were gonna post that there too.
Yeah, we were gonna put it in a plastic sleeve and have it stand up at the back, as well as trying to incorporate this verbiage on the signup sheet itself. The thing the mayor suggested before this meeting was whether or not we wanted to add a line on there where people had to initial that they had read that. That would, I mean, it's certainly something that we can do, I just would need, Shayna would have to check that when each person turns in their form that they have initialed it, otherwise the form would need to be returned to the individual, I would think.
I'm good with either or both. I, I just think that it needs to be out there so that people know what the rules are.
Yeah, I agree.
I move we put it in, present it up at front when they're filling out the form and we read it. And let's see how that goes for a while.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, open records requests. This item was also discussed at our last meeting from the standpoint of, Mrs. King brought this forward, the idea of potentially recouping some of the cost as it relates to the open records and the requests that we received. So I was asked to research this and bring it back to council for further discussion. You do have in front of you the wording from the attorney general as it relates to the cost of records and what can be charged relative to those open records requests. You also have some verbiage on, at your desk or in your packet that also talks about the rights of the requesters, the responsibility of the governmental bodies, and procedures to obtain information that I found on some other websites that I would like to add to ours as well, just to help clarify some of the open records or public information request items. But you also have a draft ordinance to see if council is interested in approving the ordinance with the fees as we discussed the last time. It's 2023-09, so I can open up the floor for conversation from you all if that's still something you want to pursue or not pursue. You do have the ordinance in front of you if you want to adopt the attorney general's cost structure, we are not allowed to deviate from that.
When was the last time the attorney general's information was updated?
I do not know, Mr. Loftus, but it's.
Well, I see things like discette, magnetic tape, data cartridge, tape cartridge, VHS video cassette, audio cassette. I'm thinking this needs to be reviewed by the state before I consider any of this. Programming personnel, 2850 per hour, I think that's more in the line of $200 per hour these days, so.
I just, yeah, I don't disagree with you, I just don't think I'll be able to get them to focus on that anytime soon.
And I don't know how we're gonna vote on something like this that's not current.
This authorizes you to, to make these charges and you can't exceed these charges. This is what the state has approved. Grant, I'll, I'll agree with you that no doubt the hourly rate should be raised, but the state won't allow us to go over what they have authorized.
I could fire up a mainframe, I think, and we can charge them $10 per minute.
I feel like if it's, if it's going exactly what the state says, then why not do it? Because it, it is what the state wants. I mean, even though there's VHS and all that, I didn't notice that. It's not like we're going to have VHS copies to hand out.
Just for clarification, does this mean everyone who submits an open record will be charged?
One of the things that Mrs. King discussed was if it was going to exceed approximately 30 minutes worth of time, that the fees would be applied at that point. So that will be at council's discretion.
Really, just to clarify, we're not, reducing the open records request wasn't the concern. The concern was excessive open records requests to where, while it is part of their job to do the open records requests, it was consuming their jobs, their other functions, I guess, aren't being handled as much because all they're doing is open records requests. And if that's gonna be the case, then maybe we need to hire a records clerk.
That was discussed, yes.
Yeah, I like to just have what the state allows and then have that written out.
I'm good with that.
Do you want to add the caveat in your motion about the 30-minute time limit for this? Is that acceptable, Carvin? Are we allowed to do that?
All that, it just has to be uniformly applied, so I'm always tricky, who's gonna be running that stop, stop clock? As long as it's uniformly applied, when somebody gets there, if you can resolve it in 10 or 15 minutes, then you can waive the fees, but if it's gonna take more than 30 minutes, you're gonna have to assess that and keep track of it.
How often does staff work on one open records request for multiple hours?
That really depends on the request and the scope of the documents that are being asked for. We've had a couple of large ones come in recently, but it, it just goes case by case. You've seen in the packet in our monthly report how many open records requests that we receive each month, and there's a lot.
I just didn't know if any of those exceeded that 30 minutes, or if all of them did?
Not all of them. And I, I don't have a percentage, but the larger request for documents over several months, and there's several different types, like if it's email or contracts, or that will take more than 30 minutes, I, I can guarantee that.
Somebody had requested Platts, I noticed that somebody at some point, somebody requested all the Platts over in the rolling B development, and I saw another one, and it's, it's, it seems like it's, it's pretty much the same guy that requests the permits and, you know, all that other things, which I would think would be more than 30 minutes. But you have to apply it consistently, correct?
I think we need something formal in place instead of just willy-nilly asking for the world and us giving it to them when there's not a lot of people in, in the office to be able to do their, their, all the jobs that they have.
There's a provision in state law, though, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Atkins, that within 10 days, you have to notify the requister if it's going to be time-consuming and how much it's going to cost. And that might be effective where someone would say, well, you know, maybe I'll shorten it up.
Well, I think that, that she would put that, those wording, that wording in there.
That's required.
And that's, yeah, that's specifically in here.
It's in the rights of the requister as well as the.
That might be a better option than just, you know, blanket, you know, if you want information, it's gonna cost you.
So back to what I was saying, that is required in the language, or it is listed in the language of rights of the requister and responsibilities of the governmental bodies. This is the information I suggested we add to the website to help with the understanding of how this is transacted and where the boundaries are for both sets of parties, both those requesting and those providing the records.
So the rights of the requister and the responsibility of the governmental bodies, that will be worded?
Would go on the website, yes.
Would go on the website, where there will also be a form for them to fill out for open records.
We have a form already, but yes, we would like to simplify that a little bit and put it forward because, for instance, there are records that we are requested to provide where often we have to circle back with the requister and say, are you okay if we redact certain items that are allowed? If we can get that information upfront, that's just one more thing that we can go ahead and get done, which hopefully would speed up the process for that person. So if we provide that information on the form upfront for the requister, that might help with some of the frustration that goes when the delays occur.
And, and when you have an amount, like you, if there isn't an inordinate amount of open records for that one particular request, you tell them, like, this is what you're gonna have to pay for this because it's gonna cost this and this and this. You're not just gonna have this bundle of paper and say, okay, you owe us $500.
Right, we would have to provide them notice of such, and I believe, and Mr. Atkins can clarify, I believe you can request a deposit for that as well. can clarify, I believe you can request a deposit for that as well.
You're going to give them an estimate of how much you think it's going to be, and then you can require a deposit toward that cost. And that allows for some give and take. I mean, a lot of times the requestor will say, well, you know, that's not what I really wanted. Let's, let's read, let's adjust that request and get maybe a little more focus. And it works for both the benefit of the requestor and the benefit of the city. We're not entitled to ask why. Person can ask for the documents and we're required to give it to them. But sometimes they ask for something they don't realize they're going to get a whole truckload of stuff. And if we get a chance to have some give and taking communication, we can get focused on what exactly they're looking for.
Yes, I like that.
A lot of that's just basically coming in line with what most of the cities around us do. I did, when I went back and looked at the tape for last time's meeting, I think I mentioned that Decatur didn't charge, but as I've done a bit more digging, actually, Decatur, Roanoke, North Lake Bridge, Fort Boyd, and Justin all list the associated fees with the attorney general. So we are one of the few in our area that do not do that.
You need a motion on this?
No, ma'am, I just need direction and I'll bring it back on the ninth for approval.
I'm good with it. Yeah, bring it back.
Please proceed.
Okay, let's go to number nine, obsolete public works equipment.
You'd like to join me up here, sir. We do have a presentation that we'd like to show to council. This is some of the information that Mr. Dominguez has put forward as it relates to just machinery and equipment. And we've talked about this briefly during the budget, but we'd like to go over it in a more formal manner at this time.
All right, first we have our vector. So this equipment is used to clear sewer lines. Yeah, mainly just sewer lines and to clean out around gas lines with hydro excavation. This piece of equipment was bought prior to me, prior 6012, 13? Because I just got here in 13, around there. They bought it used, and this is a high-end piece of equipment. One, it tears up our roads, it's too big, and we don't put as much use into it as we put money into it. Usually cities our size use trailer mounted. My view on this is it's worth money right now. It's not worth much, $30,000, $19,000, but if we wait, it's going to be worth zero or scrap metal. So it's a safety issue because it's just getting older and harder to use. What we would need is a hydro or a trailer-mounted version, which is the top one's a jetter. It does what the front end of the truck does, and the hydro excavator is the back end, the yellow one. New one is probably a little over half a million dollars or more versus more economical for our size, maybe $1,000 to $9,000.
This is, this is one that we talked about recently where we had to borrow one because we had a breakage, and we were very lucky that we were able to borrow from the city of Boyd, which is right down the road. Otherwise, Mr. Dominguez has to go to South Arlington to find one. So as we are considering the capital improvement plan and as we are working through these items that we need to try and salvage whatever funds that are available in them and harvest that money as we would through an auction or something else, and as we consider putting these on our replacement schedules, this is what he would recommend for the city. Now, we would love it if we had $170,000 or $150,000 to replace these right now. I don't know that we have those funds. We don't, we only had about $100,000 difference in this fiscal year versus what we had budgeted. So that's, wouldn't be enough to cover both of these. But these are the type of things that we want to get in front of council so that you all are aware of the needs of the departments. These are not things that we want to have or would be nice to have. These are critical needs for them to actually serve the community because the longer a break goes or a leak goes, the more water we lose, the more it costs, the more inconvenience the residents are, and time is of the essence in this particular instance.
Next, our trailers. Well, we have, they bought these two flatbeds in the middle with the water tank in the back to transfer water. I really don't know what the intent was, but when they bought them, when they were carrying these water tanks, both trailers had already had been activated. So why did we continue to purchase? Couldn't tell. Oh, okay, sorry, that's the first one, right. The one on the left is our more use or in the use, daily use, we use that one for mowing and moving things around. The ramps weigh, I would say a good 100 pounds. So if you accidentally drop that, it's going to break something. And the weight of it, it keeps breaking, it's falling off on the highway. It is definitely, they're all three safety issues, and I really don't know when we even acquired these trailers, but yeah, they're all just junk, really. That's just. Some move equipment, we need, I guess, a more fit for public works would be a gravity tilt. One, you save on ramps. You don't need to go up ramps. It's a more modern and safer way to transport equipment. And then the utility trailer, when we go buy valves, tie any type of material that needs to be tied down, that's more convenient use in every aspect, and there's just safety.
So in looking at the ARPA funds, and I mentioned that we have another $54,000, et cetera, this may be something that council wants to fund out of that remaining money. This would really affect the day-to-day works of the public works department itself, and it is something that we could pay cash for and put that to good use. So I'm bringing this forward through that lens that it might be something to consider.
And then the dump truck. Yeah, no idea when we acquired this. I looked back, I couldn't find it. So this truck, when you drive it, I'd say 40 to 50 miles an hour, starts shaking real bad. And for the age of the truck, kind of makes sense. We did put some money into it, but it doesn't get used much. It might get used once every two years. And it sits, and by the time we have to use it again, air brakes are out, batteries are out. It's just, it costs so much money. Just something simple that doesn't cost maintenance. Well, it does, but it's not high-end, and it's more made more for the city our size.
This is another one of the items that that remaining ARPA fund could be used for if council makes that decision as we go along through this process. One of the things that Mr. Dominguez and I discussed was how much more usable this would be and how much more accessible to get into tight spaces to move chip seal or other things to use for potholes or just general public works type items. So if we auctioned the 1984 dump truck, one, you are going to have some return on that, and two, you do have some ARPA funds. So depending upon what we clear, we could bridge the gap on that.
When will, I'm sorry, when will we know about the $54,000 that?
I talked to our grant works person today, and you do have the $54,000. The $2,000 that you allocated, we had leftover that Mr. Schumake discussed, and the $52,000 some odd that we were refunded from OpenGov, we still have to allocate that. So you have a total of about $54,000 to allocate.
You're auctioning off two trucks and three trailers?
There will be some funds from that, for sure.
So that gives us more to work with.
Yes, the ARPA funds are just the ones that we have to commit by a date certain, but the funds that we receive from the auction, council can choose how to reallocate that any direction they'd like.
Next, we have our 2004 dog ram. It's been here for a good while, and the mileage is not really terrible, but it does have some maintenance to attend to. When you drive with heavy loads, you will go from 60 miles to 0 miles an hour. It loses all the power in it. I don't know what happens or anything like that. And I don't know how much money it would take, being that it's, or if it would even be an option to put money into it as it's an older truck. You could get money for it auctioning that it still works. Maybe it's something that somebody would want to put money into. On the recommendation of hauling equipment, we would need to consider getting a 110 truck. It's, that's what it's meant, versus the haul equipment and three-quarter ton, even the F250s. Yeah, they can, but you want to save the life of those trucks when we get them. And it's just the view of saving the life of every piece of equipment we can.
So when we look at that capital improvement plan, one of the things that we need to also fold into that is a vehicle replacement plan. We should have these on a live schedule of what we expect them to last for. If it's five years, if it's 10 years, based on the use, we need to develop a schedule of a checklist so that we can say, okay, we have a 2020 vehicle. It only has 10,000 miles. It's in pretty decent shape, and we use it six times a year. So we're going to continue to keep that one for a certain period of time versus the ones that they drive every day that have 200,000 miles. We need to start folding that into our five-year, five- and 10-year forecasts for vehicle replacement and repairs as well, and this may be one that council decides to add to that list. So that would be the end of some of the items that we have found in public works. We have also, as of recently, gone through some of the public works building to look at some of their other equipment, to bring it forward for council to review as it relates to auctioning off the obsolete equipment, because I have found that we have a good amount of things that we've acquired over the past 10, 15, 20 years that at this point we really, they're not usable or we can't use them. So we need the space and we need to try and auction those things off and move them through. It kind of goes hand in glove with the records management that we've been doing. So we'll bring that back to you at a future meeting for you all to continue to review.
So would you all use the gravity tilt trailer more than the dump trailer? Would that be?
Not right now. What would be used more would be a dump trailer. We don't have equipment yet, but I would suggest as we take growth, we're going to get more equipment because we're going to pick up streets. Streets, you need more, you need skis, you need rollers, you need just heavy equipment things, and that might be a more future look into it. But the dump trailer, for sure, it would save the life on the back of it because right now I'm driving with a bucket full of dirt and driving straight across town. That's not good.
Any other questions on this item?
Well, if we have the $54,000, can, we can go ahead and make a motion to approve that dump trailer?
Yes, that would be at council's discretion.
And also, is it fair to do a motion to dispose of some of this equipment that's ready to go at this time?
I'm not sure necessarily, I mean, yes, you can make that motion. Really, what I need is direction from council. If that's what you want us to do, we can certainly pursue that. As I've discussed with you all before, we have certain requirements. We can't just, we can't just give it away. We have to put it out for auction and accept the highest bid since these were purchased with public funds. I have talked to staff about getting an auction put together and let's start moving in that direction because there's also some items in the old school that we'd like to bring to you. For instance, we have some old dog runs back there that are no longer usable. We have some sender blocks back there that are not usable. Those type of things I'd like to bring forward as well to fold into that auction.
Now, on your auction, are you taking it to like Richie Brothers to do the auction? Or is this something you're running on a website hoping somebody sees?
It depends. Some of the bigger equipment, I think, might be beneficial to use Richie Brothers from that angle, but some of the smaller things we generally put on. Rene Bates is one that a lot of cities use, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to use some of the ARPA funds for the dump trailer.
A second.
Win favor?
Aye.
Well, I still had questions, but that's fine.
Do you have some more questions? You got the floor. You've got some questions.
Well, how many, for the $54,000, how much is that going to buy? Is that going to buy your dump trailer and one of the other machines? Or will the $54,000 be able to get all three of them? The dump trailer and your yellow machine and that black?
Those are about $150,000 for the hydro and the jetter. So those would be something we'd want to put on our capital plan. The $54,000, we could acquire the dump trailer and the two other trailers that Mr. Dominguez discussed. That would be within the cash range that we have left in the ARPA funds.
And that's where I was going, is get what the maximum we can get.
So do you want to make a motion to approve the other trailers for them?
Yes.
I thought he said that he was talking about approving them auctioning.
The auction? Yes, send them to auction. So we could get the dump trailer and two of the other trailers to replace the three we're getting rid of, right?
Yes, sir. The two that we would purchase would be a seven-by-16 tube-top lowboy, which is about $7,000, and then the gravity tilt trailer is about $10,000, and it's a seven-by-21.
And do you have the funds to do that with the dump trailer?
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at, to get all three of them.
So we're getting three trailers.
How much was the dump trailer? Eleven, some change?
$11,000, yes, sir.
So after we auction those off, we may be able to use the rest of those funds and what we make off the auctions to get that one-ton truck. But it'll depend on what we get on the auction.
Get the vector. We don't want to auction that, the big truck, until we either.
Have something else to replace it.
Yeah, we got to have something because when, when the break happens on sewer lines, a fog overflow creates more issues with TC. That's what we're trying to avoid on that.
Let us do some research, and we can bring back some suggestions on the hydro and the jetter from that standpoint as to what they need in that regard with the vector. But the big dump truck, some of those other things, we can go ahead and get those ready for auction.
The council's already approved the dump trailer.
And so you're wanting to approve the other two, the gravity tilt and the lowboy one?
If he needs them and we can afford them, yes.
Do you have vehicles to pull those at this point?
We got one truck that'll hold it.
I make a motion to approve the other two trailers.
The gravity tilt and the?
Lowboy one from the ARPA funds.
I'll second.
Win favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
That'll give us about $26,000 left to use.
All right, number 10, reserved lease department motorcycle lease agreement.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. What I bring before you tonight is a proposition, a proposal that I've done some research on. I have a strong background in traffic enforcement, and I was a motor sergeant for nine years in my former agency. Mr. Schumake is a good source for why a police motorcycle is so valuable in traffic enforcement. As you see on the agenda commentary that I've submitted, our traffic crashes here within our city limits that we are responding to continue to go up. I recently did some research on the number of vehicles traveling through our city, and it's where 114 and 287 come together, we have about 45,000 cars a day go through there. That's a lot for our, for our city to handle. We keep having more and more accidents. If you look, it's gone from 134 in 2020 to we've done now 199 year to date, and this was a few days ago. So I'm sure it's over 200 now that we've responded to and worked, and we've had several major crashes. We had one not too long ago that we worked where a lady's arm was severed in the crash. So we're working some pretty serious injury accidents, and it's my extreme desire to do something about that. One of the ideas that. One of the ideas that came to me was we have recently put a reserve officer on our staff, Officer James George. And I mentioned when I, when I brought him here for his swearing in, that he is a police motorcycle professional. He's a instructor, as am I. He has a lot of background in enforcement from a motorcycle. He happens to own a police motorcycle that he uses in competitions and now represents us very well in that endeavor. But to be able to put him out on the highway to try to slow the cars down so that we can decrease the number of major accidents that we're having to respond to with our fire department, I think would be a great use of, of our resources. I think he's an untapped resource that we're not putting to the best, uh, effect at this time. What this proposal does, this lease agreement, we would lease the motorcycle from him while he is conducting enforcement for the city of Rome. We would pay Officer George $1 for the lease. He retains ownership of it, but it allows us to put him under our coverage while he is doing enforcement activity. Should the motorcycle get hit or, um, something happened to it while he's working for us, he would not get out that money. By us paying him a dollar for a, for a lease and then putting him on TML under, like we do all of our vehicles here in the city, it would cover that motorcycle while he was doing the enforcement for us. And it's under, it's under his reserve status. So this isn't a full-time officer that we're adding. All this does is says that when he comes into work in his reserve capacity, he can take that motorcycle out and do enforcement activity on it to help us slow down traffic and hopefully decrease the number of accidents. You'll see there it's going to cost $1,090. That's $1 for the lease and then $1,089 is what it costs. I will tell you just for the record, from our underwriting specialist with TML, this is workers' compensation, law enforcement liability, and then the auxiliary officer auto liability, um, to add that, uh, coverage to the motorcycle. Now, if he's at home and drops it or something, we're not covering that. That doesn't, it only, you know, it's only covered when he's working for us in his reserve capacity. So I think it's a, it's a minimal, uh, cost for us to, to submit to get a pretty good return on our investment. So, um, we did have our city attorney look over the lease agreement. He made a few adjustments and then resubmitted it. So it's gone through, it's passed legal. And just for the record, this, 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 uh, lease agreement was taken from other cities who do this exact same thing. So we're not, we're not writing the book here. We're, we're just basically copying what other cities have done to great effect.
Would our insurance cover him since he's representing Rome in competitions? Would that cover him in the competitions? I know he probably will never drop his bike in one of those competitions, but.
Oh, he will and we do. Mr. Schumake can attest to that. When you compete at slow speed competitions, these are not high-speed track competitions. This is slow speed cone work. These motorcycles are designed with, uh, crash bars on them. So when they, when they are set down in a motorcycle competition, it doesn't do damage to them.
And I said, he's on a Harley. It's their Pan America, but really you can't hurt a Harley, especially in these competitions. But the impact that motors have, and I know getting pulled over by us, you're probably not the most favorite person that they're going to see all day, but the impact that they have, especially on the highways, I can attest to, because when we really targeted 114 in 2015, 2016 and 17, our accident numbers went from two or three today to even nine or 10 that I worked in a day to maybe one a day now. And that's just from targeted speed areas where we have those high crash numbers. So really it'd make a big impact and I, I can tell you right now, the moment somebody sees him out on the highway, everybody's going to be talking about it and they might just from that initial post be slowing down because hey, we got a motor officer right here working now. Same for Boyd, they should have one soon too, but. And the other kicker on it is they really pay for themselves pretty quick. Ground up motorcycle, fully outfitting everything, they'll pay for themselves in about eight to 12 weeks if they're full time. So cost-wise, it, we won't have any problems with that.
What do you mean, buy tickets? Is that what you're talking about?
It's considered budget neutral.
Yeah.
I think what I'm most worried about, because I am familiar with somebody on a motor, I get worried that they're on the highway and you can't control what those other people do.
So for nine years I was a traffic sergeant, motor-based. I, I rode a BMW 1200 RTP. For nine years I rode that motorcycle and we did highway enforcement. At one point I had a command officer come to me with the concern that it was too dangerous to work the highway. So I went to Officer Down Memorial Page and researched how many motor officers are killed each year and what kills them, because I was concerned as well. We had an officer die in, in my former city on a motorcycle and that's why I was placed into that position, uh, to turn that unit around. My research was, and this was, this, this is going to be a few years old, but I went back far enough to know that it didn't change much, but an average of five motor, motor officers a year are killed in the United States while working enforcement. The vast majority of those are from cross traffic. When they are going down a city street and a car pulls out in front of them, that's what normally kills a motor job. Highway enforcement, you're going the same direction as the, as the vehicle, so it's easier to avoid tragedy. I'm not saying it couldn't happen. We are well aware when we put on this, this badge that we are taking that risk. I don't think motor officers have an inordinate risk added to what they do as long as it's done right. And I can tell you, I wouldn't put an officer on my, on my shift or on my squad or on my team that wasn't doing it right. When we, when I took over the unit that I ran for nine years, uh, we had incredible amount of training that was implemented and a higher level of expectation from the officers. And in the nine years I was there, we had zero injury accidents and we were very active. So I appreciate your concern, but I, I, I have, I'm not as worried, I'm, I'm not as worried about an officer riding a motorcycle on the highway doing enforcement as I am my single officer working at three in the morning by himself. That's what keeps me up at night.
And you said it's 24 hours a month?
He would work anywhere from 16, well, we pay our reserve officers a very nominal fee, uh, up to 24 hours a month, but they can work. Officer Roberson consistently works well over 24 hours a month. They are required to work 16 hours a month. So his, and his enforcement would probably be anywhere from 16 to 24 hours.
And this would be daytime only?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, to that point, Mr. Johnson, I'm not a big fan of using motors after hour, after, after dark.
I'm not neither and that's why.
Yes, sir.
Back to her, it's safety and liability.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Chief Davis, this seems like a creative way of keeping our costs low and increasing our capabilities. I'm very concerned about the crossroads at 4838 and 4840. I think that's where the significant number of problems we have are. So, thank you.
I think you're exactly right. And it's not just speed enforcement. It's, it's disregarding traffic control devices. It's not using turn signals. It's not wearing seat belts. It's all the things that, that lead to these tragic crashes that we work day in and day out and, and we really want to, we want to do something about it. And this is a great way to do it at a fairly nominal cost. And it's, and like I say, it's budget neutral. We don't write tickets to, to, to generate revenue. It's never been a goal of ours to do that. And if you look at our numbers, we're more involved with the community than we are with writing tickets. So that's not a concern for us. This is just a way of getting someone out there that can really put, put a, put a dent in this thing.
And the additional insurance, is that affecting the budget at all?
We could make a budget adjustment to that end, but it's, the money is in the budget if you wanted to go that direction. If this is something council would like to do, we would need a motion authorizing me to sign the contract with the officer so that we can move forward.
I make the motion to sign that contract for him.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so much.
All right, number 11, uh, water district options.
Thank you, mayor. This is something that we have discussed at several of our previous city council meetings. You are aware that we have participated, participated in some regional planning discussions with our surrounding cities, as well as we recently had a meeting with Dr. Stuckey and Congressman Burgess's and Senator Parker's offices as it relates to what we can do for a long-term water source for Southern Wise County and potentially other areas, just dependent upon how this proceeds over the next several months. Excuse me. I also recently attended a meeting of the city managers for several of these counties, cities in Southern Wise County. And we had a conversation towards the end of that meeting about this water district. And we were asked to come back to our councils and find out what the appetite was from the current sitting councils from Boyd and Aurora, New Fairview, Rome, Paradise, et cetera, about forming this regional coalition to potentially pursue the idea of a water district. I've also talked to you all about the fact that there is a meeting on November the 15th that, um, Judge Clark is putting on for Wise County. I believe Mr. Loptus has registered for that and will be there. Mr. Dominguez will also be there on behalf of Rome to gather some information, because they are starting to look at water from not only a regional standpoint, but also from a county standpoint. And they will have some representatives from the Uppertunity Ground Conservation District that we discussed with you all at the last meeting. So this doesn't necessarily require any commitment at this point. This doesn't lock us into anything. I'm just trying to gauge from council whether you want us to continue to participate in those discussions about a regional water district formation and bring you back this type of information to potentially be a part of that type of a consortium. I know we've talked about it and we've talked around it, but I need some direction from you all if this is something you want to continue to pursue. At some point in time, it very well may have some financial implications for us if we have to put forward legislation, if we have to create bills for those to be filed in Austin. But as of right now, today, there is no requirement other than are you interested in us continuing to pursue this option?
Is this just making our voice a little louder since there's multiple cities instead of just Rome?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and I wasn't going in a direction you didn't want us to go in.
And number 12, petition to roll back tax rate.
Thank you, mayor. In your packet, you have quite a bit of information as it relates to this petition that was submitted at our last council meeting. You will recall that we began discussing this tax rate back in August and we were directed by council to post a notice in the paper for council to issue up to the de minimis rate, which was somewhere in the 50 cent range. Council made the decision on September the 14th to keep the tax rate the same for this fiscal year as it was for last fiscal year and further gave staff the direction to restrict any of those funds that would be generated for the use of infrastructure projects only. We had estimated that that would bring in about $220,000. We could add that to the 120 that we already had budgeted, which would give us a, a better advancement towards fixing either streets or infrastructure as the majority of our streets need some sort of attention, or it could have been directed for iron eye clay pipe runoff from that, um, for that project. The tax rate was actually ratified on September the 28th at your meeting and this petition was presented to us on October the 12th. Once the petition is presented, you have 20 days, as I have put in your agenda commentary in order to determine if the petition is valid. I think I went through and let me get the information for you. I put this information together from the petition that was put forward. We had approximately 97 people who signed the petition. 29 to 30 of them were either eligible or they were not registered voters, so they came off as potential signers. So that brings us down to about 67 or 68 that are potentially valid. And in order for the petition to force the rollback election to come forward, they only needed 35 signatures. So they're well in excess of that. So as a result of determining that the petition is valid, I have prepared for you the order of an election, which would come at your next uniform election date. We are still checking with some of the surrounding cities to find out if that's May or next November, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be May unless council orders a special election sometime prior to that. One of the things that I want you to be aware of is if we continue as has been stated down this path and in January they start to send out the tax bills. So this is an approximate $13 difference for the average home a month in Rome. And we would have to, as the money comes in, we're going to have to set that aside, because if the petition, once it goes to election, if it's validated, we do have to issue single checks to every person who overpaid. If, and we have a certain amount of timeframe in which to do that. So it gets a little bit more complex as we go down that path if the petition is actually turned back at an election. So you have the information that you need in front of you. You have, also have the resolution that would need to be signed, calling for that election and then we'll have to get which uniform election date it's going to be on. We'll have to notify the community so that they have that opportunity to vote and can be a part of this process. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have relative to this issue.
Well, they walk the street and beat the doors for signatures. Did they alert them that we rolled back taxes? You might as well forget about new streets. You might as well forget about new sewer lines going in. Was, was all that presented or did they just say, hey, sign here and we'll keep your taxes then?
I can't answer that, Mr. Johnson. I do know that there are certain things that are required on the petition that they have to notify people about, certain verbiage, and that is on the petition. But it doesn't mention anything about what the money was to be used for or that it had been restricted for certain and particular items. So I don't know what was said individually, but I know it wasn't printed on the petition.
I just don't want to walk away from this and then they start beating on our doors knowing why we didn't put new streets in when they voted it out.
And that was my main concern. What was the education here for everybody signing this? Cause you're talking about a $4.21 difference a month. And I don't say that lightly, because I budget down to the very penny, because we're a single income home, so every dollar, penny counts. But you're talking about a $4 difference every month. And now the city has money to fix these things that we did a survey on and to address those complaints. But now we have a petition saying we don't want to address this almost.
Yeah, that's my frustration, because we do know that we need street repairs and infrastructure and, but we can't have any money to do any of that with.
Right. And if you don't have money to work with, you're not going to have money to put a water tire in or get water. So eventually you're going to be back to asphalt roads with no water and no water to flush your toilet with. Over $4 and what'd you say, per month difference?
Yeah, it's just $4.21 difference between the lower rate and the one that we voted on.
But earlier you had said, Mrs. Ty, that, um, it was, you know, that anything that we did, it did, if it wasn't a bond, it was only a Band-Aid.
I was speaking of the wastewater plant.
Yeah, you know, um, we're going to have to get bonds to solve the water and the wastewater issues. Now, there are some precursors to even qualifying for those bonds and that involves engineering and planning. And, um, I view that when we speak about streets, infrastructure, really that's what we're talking about, is the ability to even bring forward engineering, um, plan to take on these projects. And I think that's what we're going to miss. projects. And I think that's what we're going to miss by not having these funds.
And I will caution counsel that this is simply a petition. Your voters still have to speak. And so it could be affirmed at an election and then we continue to move forward. It just changes the trajectory and the speed to which we could do some of these projects. I think I brought to you that there were several streets in Old Town that were failing. There are several streets in Crown Point that are also failing. The entrance to Bywell needs some work. All of these areas, in addition to some of the other sections in town, need to be addressed. And we have absolutely got to put in place some sort of an improvement plan. We can't continue to tread water at the rate that we're treading now and not achieve any of these milestones that need to be done on behalf of the city. When we talked about this to begin with, I mentioned that Boyd had set their rate at 60 cents and had kept it there. And as their tax base grows, they generate additional funds. And you can visibly see all of the things that Boyd is doing to better their community. I have calls from folks that are in the development world every week, as we've discussed. And the first thing they want to know is what are we doing for the infrastructure? And we don't have anything to offer at the moment. So some of these things that people say they'd like to have, such as restaurants and street repair, et cetera, we've got to make some progress on doing it. So we'd have to see what happens at the election. And hopefully, depending upon how people vote, we'll have several get out and vote. And then the voices will be heard as to which way they'd like to go.
Just to be clear, once the petition has been declared valid by the city secretary, which I understand that's what the city administrator is telling us, the city doesn't have any choice. You have to schedule the election. So really, the only point at this is can it be done? Which regular election date is the most feasible?
So November is too soon, correct?
Yes, we have well past the deadline for November.
And so May would be the logical election.
Unless counsel wants to call a special election.
And that's going to cost?
Yes, it will cost funds.
Either, well, either the special election or the others can still cost.
Yes. Usually in regular uniform elections, we partner with others, so the costs are not as high. But if counsel calls a special election, that would be borne wholly by the city of Rome because it's our election that we're running.
Would we also be able by May to get a bond issued on the May election?
That is the goal, yes.
So we could do that at the same time and put both issues before the voters at the same time?
That is the goal.
Yes. So I guess we just have the petition, the rollback tax rate election held in May?
Do we even need a motion? Are we just forced to do this?
Well, we are required because the petition has been validated, but we would need to approve the Resolution 23-18, authorizing Ms. Mitchell to sign that so that Shana can countersign it and we can move that forward with the election judges.
Where does it say that, Mr. Kim?
Look, in your packet, it says Resolution 23-18 of the Rome City Council calling an election on the next uniform date in 2024 pursuant to the submitted petition to reduce the tax rate. Do you need a hard copy, Mrs. Ty?
So I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2023-18.
Second.
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we've got Executive Session, Block 51.087, Deliberations Regarding Economic Development Negotiations to Discuss or Deliberate Regarding Commercial or Financial Information That the City Has Received From a Business Prospect, That the City Seeks to Locate, Stay, or Expand in or Near the City, and With Which the City Is Conducting Economic Development Negotiation. Monarch Utilities and Prairie Point. It's 7:35. We will convene into Executive Session.
This conference will now be recorded.
Session. We've got ongoing negotiations that we will continue with. And so that will be done at a later time. Any future agenda items? No? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. And all in favor? Okay, very good. We're out of here.